Good morning, everybody.
It is morning.
It is morning. Welcome, everybody, to the Falls Church Community Center for our second Town Hall meeting on the FY14 proposed budget. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager. What we will do this morning is we will have a number of slides that we'll go through. I have some slides on the general government budget, and then we will have just a few slides that Bill Hicks, our director of Public Works, will present on the stormwater utility that is proposed as part of the FY14 budget. My colleagues with the schools, Tony Jones, superintendent of schools, is here, and chairman of the school board, Susan Carney, will present just a few slides on the school budget as well. So we'd like to get through some information out to you, to the public, and then we'd like to take the opportunity to get your questions, get your comments, and the purpose of this meeting really is to get information out, but also to hear from you in terms of what you think about the FY14 budget and get your suggestions. We have many elected officials here in the audience with us. I'd like to identify them, both on the city council and the school board. We have Vice Mayor Dave Snyder here in the back of the room.
Thank you all for being here.
Councilmember David Tarter and Councilmember Phil Duncan. Are there any council members that I've missed? And on the school board, I've already introduced Chairman Carney, and we have Mr. Kiran Sharp on the school board here in the room as well. Are there any other school board members? Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. It's a beautiful Saturday morning, and there's a lot going on. A lot of us probably ought to be out on the street picking up trash with the cleanup, but here we are, and so we'll use this time as best we can to go through the budget. Let me just give a quick overview of what I'd like to try to cover, just a quick run-through of the budget. I want to talk about the capital improvements program and provide a little bit more emphasis on that in this Town Hall meeting than we provided in the first Town Hall meeting, and then talk about stormwater, and then talk about schools. A quick summary of our expenditures in the budget. If you take down some of the major components of the budget, we have general government, which in this proposed budget grows by 3.9 percent, or $1.2 million, and that's the growth of FY14 relative to FY13. We have grants, and we have debt service that's associated with our capital improvements program. The school board has adopted a budget request to the city council for school operations, which would grow by $4.2 million, or 14.3 percent. The community services fund has a decrease in it, and that has some unfunded items in it that we're working with the school board to address, including the TV station and some other items. Our capital reserves, this is funding capital reserves for future capital and our pay-as-you-go capital, and we'll talk about that in more detail. And then there's been a good deal of discussion in the community about our fund balance restoration, and in FY13, we had $1.1 million for fund balance restoration, and that's being decreased by $900,000 to $200,000. And we'll talk more about the reason for fund balance and how it is used in our capital planning. Overall, then, the bottom line is the budget is growing by 8.2 percent, or $5.6 million. This is where the money comes from. We are heavily reliant on real estate taxes. 60 percent of our revenues come from real estate taxes. And if you go around the rest of the pie, we have, this is the car tax principally, but it's also business tangible taxes for equipment that's in our local businesses. This is the meals tax and utility taxes that when you go to a restaurant, you pay a 4 percent consumer tax on that restaurant bill. That comes to the city. Sales taxes, of the 5 percent sales tax that you pay at the cash register, 1 percent of that comes back to the city directly, and another 1 percent of that comes back for educational purposes but pursuant to a different formula. This is the business license tax, which is 4 percent of our revenues, and then around the horn, we do have service fees for many city services, and notably for all of our athletic programs and wreck and park programs. Those are all fee-supported. In the budget that I have presented to the city council back in March, that budget contains in it a request for an increase in the tax rate of six cents from the current $1.27 to $1.33. We did recommend to the city council that we advertise a higher rate of $1.41, but I don't think anybody expects that $1.41 or anything close to that is going to be adopted. But the reason I recommended that is the budget with the six cent increase did not include some items that have traditionally been funded in the past that were not funded in this budget. Those were problems that really needed to be solved. And then with respect to the stormwater utility, we're proposing to both increase our level of service rather dramatically in the area of stormwater to meet both federal mandated needs, but also to address flooding on private property. And in order to restore that back, and we've proposed to fund those improvements through a new stormwater utility. And if we were to maintain the proposed level of service to meet those stormwater needs and not adopt the utility fee, then to fund that program in the regular budget would require five and a half cents on the tax rate. So to simply keep those options open for the city council as it goes through its deliberations, I recommended advertising this higher rate, but as a practical matter in the budget, what is required is the $1.33 rate. Now, that comes with growth in the economy, and some of that is reflected in the growth in assessed values in the city. These are the different categorizations of property in the city, but overall, our assessed value, including new construction in the city, is a growth of about 2.9 percent. For the single-family homeowner or townhouses, it's been growing at a higher rate, and commercial at 1.6 percent. Of our entire assessed value in the city, 22 percent of that is commercial, and the remainder, 78 percent, is residential, including apartments, but residential, single-family houses, townhouses, condos, or apartments. So for the median homeowner with this proposed budget, there is an increase in the tax bill. So this shows the median tax bill for homeowners in the city over time, from 2006 through 2013. With this budget, we would be increasing by approximately $600 for the median homeowner, and that is significant, and that is why the council is providing so much attention to work through options with this budget. Of that increase, $262 for the average homeowner is due to assessment growth or just market appreciation, and 345 of that is due to the tax rate increase. If you take it since 2006, it comes to about a 3.3 percent annual growth in the tax bill for the median homeowner in the city. Now, in terms of the city's real estate tax rate, this is one metric that we use just to compare ourselves to other jurisdictions, and there's always a complex story behind each of these rates. But if you look in the region from Manassas Park, town of Leesburg, Manassas, town of Herndon, town of Vienna, the city of Falls Church is in the middle of the pack effectively in terms of tax rates in the region. That's where we have traditionally been, and so this budget would not dramatically change that. But you do see that the municipalities and the smaller jurisdictions tend to be higher than the city, whereas the counties and the larger jurisdictions with their economies of scale and different services that they provide have a lower rate. And one thing that we would note, with the Fairfax County rate, for instance, at $1.09, that does not include trash pickup, which is worth about six cents on the tax rate. It doesn't include leaf pickup. It doesn't include the fact that in Fairfax County, in McLean, they have a three-cent surtax for the community center and these types of things. And so if you add those all together, the comparable Fairfax County tax rate is about 12 cents higher than that shown on this chart. Now, to go through every jurisdiction and try to do those things, it just becomes too complex, but I note that just as a point of information. On the revenue side, it's a pretty full chart, but this shows all of our major sources of revenue. The bottom line is, of course, is as expenditures are growing, 8.2 percent, we tailor our revenues, and particularly with addressing the real estate tax rate, so that our revenues equal 8.2 percent as well. But we do see growth in a lot of our other revenues. These altogether come to about 40 percent of our revenues. This is 60 percent of our revenues. One thing we are seeing, however, is in the sales tax area, particularly with the third-quarter financial report, our sales tax receipts are lower this year than they were a year ago. Meals tax receipts are about equal this year as they were a year ago. And those are areas that in the prior three years, as we pulled out of the recession, we generally were seeing pretty sharp increases in each of those. And so what does it mean that those revenues are flattening out? Well, we'll continue to see month by month, but it does seem to indicate that perhaps with the sequester at the federal level, the changes in the payroll taxes at the federal level, that that's showing up in some of the economic activity in the city. Again, we'll continue to monitor that, but that's the reason for a conservative forecast in sales taxes, just as an example. On the general government side, as I noted earlier, for general government services, we're growing at $1.2 million, and of that $1.2 million growth, there are three components to it. One-third of that is going to increases in our inter-jurisdictional contracts, and notably for our fire services contract, our E-911 contract, and our court services contracts with Arlington County, including jails, have major increases in them. Our retirement and health benefits are going up $420,000. That's to fund what the actuaries tell us we need to fund to keep our pension solvent. And then everything else left over for the remainder of our budget is about $420,000, or about 2 percent growth, to address everything else in the budget, including compensation, contract increases, and the like. Positions over time. Now, for those of you who are new to these budget presentations, this budget is different in years past because we actually do have some growth in revenues in years past, particularly in 2011, where we were dealing with the recession, dealing with water litigation, and other issues that had a big impact on city finances. We did significant downsizing of the city government. We currently, at one point, we had reduced our staffing by 14 percent, and I am proposing the restoration of a net gain of one position in the FY14 budget, and we're now about 11 percent lower staffing than we were in 2006. In terms of the big numbers, right now, both the school transfer and the general government budget in FY13, the current year, is 1 percent below where it was in 2007. So there has been a lot of discipline on our operating budgets over the past several years, and now we're considering FY14 and where we go from here, in light of a lot of that constriction that we've had on our operating budgets. Now, I'd like to shift to the capital planning. This, I think, is probably among the most important policy decisions that the council has to make over the coming week prior to budget adoption on April 22. We do have major capital needs, and a lot of these are deferred. As we went through the recession, we really kicked out a lot of capital needs until we were in a better financial position to be able to try to address them. But if you take the five-year plan, about 90 percent of our CIP is for school facilities, about 11 percent for general government facilities. Transportation improvements are mostly federal and state-funded, but they're paid for through our budget. And then public safety, we'll talk a little bit about those, but those are relating to the fire station principally. So here's a breakdown of where the spending is, both in FY14 and the CIP, but also over the five-year plan. But these are very significant numbers, both in FY14 in terms of what we're trying to accomplish in capital, but over the five-year period significantly as well. In public safety, what this really is, is the purchase of fire apparatus and purchase of new bay doors at the fire station and HVAC repairs. In public facilities, we have police station and court improvements at City Hall that we're trying to carry out. And then in the five-year plan, we have $114 million worth of school improvements that are contained in the CIP. Transportation, again, this is mostly state and federal funded, but these are for improvements throughout the city in the area of transportation. And then recreation and parks, we have, through our wreck and parks advisory board, they go through a master planning process for every one of our city parks, and we've allocated funding to accomplish those over the coming five years. In FY14, the headliners for our CIP include our facilities, $2.4 million for the Cherry Street preschool project, $1 million to do the advanced work on an expansion of Mount Daniel to meet enrollment growth, and then $6.7 million for the City Hall and public safety improvements. In public safety, as I mentioned before, purchase of two new fire apparatus, an engine and a ladder truck, and then improvements to the fire station. We have $430,000 to implement the master plan for the West End Park in the city, and then our transportation improvements for pedestrian improvements, and again, those are funded by federal and state funds. Now, we have a large CIP, an ambitious CIP, and I believe a very necessary CIP in order to meet these needs. So this chart shows a couple of things. One, we do have, the city council has adopted a policy in terms of what's reasonable in terms of how much debt service we should absorb as an organization, what's a safe amount of debt service. And that policy cap is the debt service should not exceed 12 percent of our overall expenditures. So this shows the policy cap. This shows what our actual debt service is right now. Now, if we were to do nothing in the CIP, our debt service will decline over time as old bond issuances are fully paid off. So this is the trajectory of debt service, down to about $3 million in 2015 if we do nothing. If we fund the CIP and everything in the CIP with the exception of the high school project, which is a $99 million project, our debt service stays below $6 million and well within policy, and this stays really within the norms of what the city pays for its capital program historically. So our big challenge, I think, as a city is to address the necessary improvements for our aging high school and how we can reconfigure it, how we can have it established in a way that will serve us for the next 50 years. Now, there are things that we will do to try to make this work financially. We think that the water sale agreement with the boundary adjustment will be part of our toolkit to help in funding that, and there are other tools that we'll use to try to mitigate this cost exposure. Right here, this shows about a 30 cent increase in the tax rate just to deal with that debt service. But I think also, very importantly, is the need right now, we have a serious CIP, and so we need a serious financial plan to accomplish it, and that really is what is behind the discussion about capital reserves, fund balance restoration, and that type of financial planning. So in the area of fund balance, this shows, back to 2006, our history on fund balance, and then these two lines show our policy range, with this being the policy goal and this being the policy floor, as a ratio of expenditures. So how much fund balance, basically cash reserve, should you have relative to how much you spend every year? So this is 12 percent of annual expenditures, and this is 17 percent of annual expenditures. And this is the actual dollar amounts right here. So in 2006, we had about $15 million in fund balance, and as we accomplished capital goals, we drew that down, and then as we dealt with financial exigencies, very difficult circumstances, we drew down the fund balance to smooth out our loss of revenue due to a whole host of factors. And then we, in a very deliberate way, grew that fund balance back up to our fund balance target, and we achieved that in 2012 ahead of schedule. Our financial plan was to do so at the end of 2013. So that's the good news, and so that's why we have in this budget a decrease in funding for fund balance restoration that is now going effectively for school operations. That's sort of the dividend of hitting our target ahead of schedule. So this is some historical numbers, and this is kind of where we plan to be in the future, within that range of our policy. Now, there's been a lot of discussion about this, and so one of the questions is, is there a best practice? Why do we have a policy of 17 percent of fund balance? It is viewed as a best practice. The GFOA has identified 17 percent of expenditures as a norm that a local government should have. Moody's, in terms of their survey of jurisdictions across the country, of their higher-rated bond issued or bond-rated localities, they tend to have 18 to 25 percent of expenditures as undesignated fund balance. And in the region, most of our peer jurisdictions have a higher fund balance ratio than the city does because we've had to draw ours down in recent years. I think also relevant to the discussion is our own history. And in 2003, we embarked on a very important project for the city, the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School Project. And as we entered into that project, we were in a strong financial position. We planned it out to be a $30 million project, 25 million bond-funded, and 5 million cash-funded. And as we went into that project, we had $15.7 million of undesignated fund balance, which is about 35 percent of our expenditures for that year. So we entered into that in a strong position, and we needed it. Our financial plan was to fund 5 million of it in cash, but as we went through that project, we identified needs that it was wise and prudent to accomplish while the contractors were here working in the city. We built new science classrooms at the high school. That was a need that had been identified, but it was too expensive. We didn't think we could get to it. Well, when we got underway in building the middle school, we said, let's get this done while Clark Construction is here in the city. Similar thinking with Mount Daniel expansion. We had enrollment growth. Our kids were packed into these classrooms, and we had a similar calculation. Clark Construction is here, working in the city. It will be cost-effective. It would be efficient for us to try to address this need. Together, these add-ons were $5 million. So we spent $10 million in cash as we embarked on this, what began as a $30 million project. We currently have $12 million in the city in cash right now. So to put that into context, we're now embarking on about a $114 million improvement plan for schools that we're in serious planning for, and we have significantly less financial resources, financial capacity, financial resilience as we go into that. And so that, in a nutshell, I think, is the argument in favor of trying to strengthen our financial position now in order to mitigate both the financial risk and also the tax exposure that our taxpayers would have in future years. Now, as the council is coalescing around options for the budget going forward, we're going into the last week of their deliberations, and they'll meet again on Tuesday night to work through some options. This is the time of the year where we present our third-quarter financial results. They were favorable, and so what we presented to the council is that we're projecting about 2 percent surplus of revenues for FY13, which would generate about $1.5 million. As part of our financial plan, we have in the FY13 budget $1.1 million for fund balance restoration, for a total of about $2.6 million of surplus revenues in FY13, both planned and coming from higher than our projections. So what the council is working through is some options to use these funds to lower some of our FY14 budget items and also to pre-fund the stormwater utility, so we can create the utility, begin work, not issue the stormwater fee in December as originally planned, but instead have that fee be administered next June, and then we carry on from that point forward. And that really came out of listening in our Town Hall meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, with our religious institutions about giving them additional time to plan for the stormwater fee. So those are items that are being discussed by the city council. The council does have policies for the use of one-time money, so if this money would be used in FY14, it would be considered the use of fund balance, and that, according to prudent financial management, means that that money really should only be used for one-time type of expenditures. It should not be used for staff or for recurring types of expenditures because all that means is this time next year, we'd have a hole in our budget. So that's a quick overview of the city budget, and I would like to, before we get to questions and comments, if I could ask Mr. Hicks to provide an overview, just a quick summary of the stormwater utility proposal and the discussions of where we are right now in terms of how to fund those needs as we go into the last week of the budget. And then after that, we'll go to Chairman Carney. And here's the clicker.
Good morning. Thanks for everybody who's come out today. I'm Bill Hicks. I'm the Public Works Director here with the city. In this year's budget, as Wyatt has mentioned a couple of times, there's a proposal to take the funding that goes to stormwater and take that out of the general fund and build a new enterprise fund with that money, and increase the services and thereby actually increase the fund that goes in to manage stormwater. This picture was taken here in the city two years ago after the big storm that we had in 2011. This was not uncommon. We saw a great deal of flooding. We have, in the city, we have really three reasons to think about stormwater in a different way than we have in the past. The first is that our system is aging. We've got about 25 miles of storm sewer underneath the ground. We've got about 72 miles of curb and gutter, 1,400 appurtenances. They're all put together. Those are manholes and catch basins. They were built between the '30s and the '60s primarily. They were built by developers as they came in, and they preceded a lot of the regulation. They were built without the thought of what the city might look like in 2013. And then all of that infrastructure begins to age. It's kind of like buying a new car. After 10 years, you've got a lot of problems, and you're hoping it's not your transmission. We have a lot of defects in our pipes. This is a pipe in the ground. Picture's not that old. It's a big hole in the top of the pipe, so it's not really a pipe anymore. Dirt falls in and fills up the pipe. This is another picture. The dirt is up to the spring line. About halfway through that pipe doesn't carry as much water. That infrastructure is aging. It's about $80 million to reinvest, rehabilitate that system. We could probably do it over the next 50 years, but we have to start. The second reason is the Chesapeake Bay program. We've been talking about the Chesapeake Bay and the need to bring it back into a restored state. That has been primarily a voluntary effort put in place by the federal government, and that has yet to be very successful. And so there's now new regulations that will push us to build structures in the city to meet water quality objectives. That's going to occur. We're going to face about a million-dollar investment every single year for the next 15 years, and that's a requirement by the federal government that we have to do. The third reason is we're certainly seeing more frequent, more larger rain events. It's hard to put a real number on it, but as we see global warming happening, we know that we're feeling the effects of it. And certainly, as our infrastructure ages, those imperfections in our system become more and more apparent. So those are the three big reasons. So if we move forward with this enterprise fund and the proposal that's before you today, the question is, is what do you get for that? And it's these six things. We will touch every single reach, structure to structure, that's every little bit of pipe in the city, every year. We'll clean it out, make sure it's in good working order. We'll do a comprehensive evaluation of our system, and that'll cycle through every fifth year. We will run a camera through. We'll analyze. We'll figure out where our pipes are deteriorating, where our priority areas are, and be able to lay out a comprehensive and thoughtful, planful approach to capital investments into our system. We'll do the day-to-day repair work. When you have a break on a pipe, what you see on the surface are typically two things, a hole in the ground and flooding when it rains. We'll be able to address those things in a temporary way before we get to the big capital improvements. We'll be able to patch those, repairing sinkholes. We spent three years developing a watershed management plan with an advisory group. That plan was adopted this last year. It lays out policy areas It lays out policy areas to focus on for policy, and it also talks about 20 capital projects to improve flooding, public safety, and water quality throughout the city. This enterprise fund, it'll allow us to implement that whole plan within the next 10 years. We'll comply with our permit and we'll reinvest and rehabilitate that $80 million investment. So this was proposed in the city manager's budget on March 11th. We've had discussions with the public several times, this is our third town hall meeting. We've also met separately with the churches, had a meeting with church leadership, and we've met separately with members of the Chamber of Commerce. And then this enterprise fund is expected to be voted on at the time of budget adoption on the 22nd of this month. Since the proposal came out in the manager's budget, there have been, there's been some evolution. We started with a $19.80 per 200 square foot billing area. That would be the, the revenue would be generated through this billing unit. Every parcel in the city would be billed according to the impervious cover on their lot, rooftops, sidewalks that they own, their private sidewalks, driveways, big parking lots. Each of those areas, the total square foot of that would be divided by 200 and then multiplied by 1980, and that would be your fee. The average single-family home has about 2,755 square foot of impervious surface, so that would translate to a bill of about $270 per year. As we have been working through since March 11th to get to where we are in the budget conversations with council and the public, we have made some changes to this. And right now, the proposal is to drop this from 1980 to $18 per billing unit. And the way we're doing that is we're leveraging the sanitary sewer system and the stormwater proposal so that we can share staffing. And it actually results in a reduction of 1.5 FTEs, 1 full-time, 1.5 full-time equivalents. And that would translate to a cost per average home of $250 per year. Now, that bill, when you get it, would be a fee on your real estate bill, so that would come out twice a year, so you divide that by half, so it's $125 each time you get a real estate bill. As Wyatt just mentioned, there is a proposal to cede this in FY14 with surplus monies, and that would allow us not to send a bill for this in December, but a bill for this in June. So the first bill associated with this would happen in June, and that's a significant reflection of conversations we've had with the nonprofits and the business community about budgeting on calendar years. The city budgets July 1 through June 30, and many of the folks, especially the churches' budget from January 1 through December 31. So this would push that back into their next budget cycle. We've also heard a number of concerns about the way the appeal process. If you got a bill, you said, we're concerned about the math on the bill, we'd like to appeal this decision, the process for that appeal and the proposal would end at the director, my level, to say, we've done the math, we've looked at it, we've taken a good look at it. What goes, what is now on the table is to consider having the stormwater utility be a part of the existing utility commission, and then it could be appealed through that. So that's kind of where we are at this point, and I'll be here this morning to take questions with the rest of the folks.
Chairman Carney?
I already have one.
Okay.
Presentation for me?
Yes.
Thank you. I know I'm going to trip on this cord because I'm not very graceful. Thanks. Good morning, everyone. Oh, come on, you can do better than that. This is a school presentation. There you go.
Good morning, Mrs. Carney.
Thank you, Gary. Awesome. Thanks for being here this morning. I know I woke up this morning and thought of all the gardens to be weeded and mulched and all of the plants to be pruned and all the other spring things I could be doing in my yard, but I'm pleased to see so many of you here this morning because this is the most important thing that we do as a city and as school board members and city council members and staff during the course of our years, make determinations about how we spend our money and what that means about our city and our vision for our future. So I'm going to just take a few slides that are going to talk about the school's proposed budget for fiscal year 14 and try to answer your questions. Okay, so very simply, what is our request? And it's here. The total is a little bit shy of $44 million is our request. We have three budgets that we fund with this request. The primary one is our operating budget, and that's the one that we'll be talking probably the most about this morning. It gets the most attention because it's the largest and because that budget funds actually educating our children. That's where the buses are, the teachers are, the books, and all the things that we need to educate children on a day-to-day basis are in this operating budget, which is a little shy of $41 million in this request. The community service budget, you'll see, is a little bit less than $2 million. The community service budget is where we house the money that we get serving the communities. So when people use our buildings for events or when third parties outside the community rent our buildings for events, those kinds of things, that goes in the community services budget. And then the expenses in that budget are to offset those usages. So it's got its own kind of P and L for community service, and we love when the community, either people who are in the city or others outside the city, use our facilities because it helps us to maintain them because it offsets part of our cost. And then finally, our food service budget is a separate budget, and it's really self-funding. You know, what the federal government gets is for food and what parents pay for breakfast and meals for their kids funds that budget. We're going to focus here just a minute on the operating budget. And the operating budget, we want you to understand what the components are. As you can see, the city transfer is by and large most of our money here in the city for education, for our operating budget. We get a little money from the state, and we're always talking to our state legislators to try to get more. We get a little money from the federal government, but the vast majority of the funds come from all of us who are sitting in this room and the taxes that we pay that go to educate our children. And as you can see, the increase in the operating budget this year is about 9 percent, a little bit shy of 9 percent. For spending by category, you'll see the pie that goes around the wheel. 74 percent of the money goes directly to educate kids in the classroom, and we're very proud of this. The state mandate is 65 percent. So you can see, we are well ahead of that. And every year, the school board is looking to fine-tune, fine-tune, fine-tune to put more money in the classroom, more money for materials for kids, more money directly for learning rather than administration. You notice on this chart, after what goes in the classroom, the next largest expense for us is facilities because we have to have classrooms. And then you'll notice administration, which is the kind of lime green slice there, is only 4 percent of our budget, down from 6 percent. Every year, we try to squeeze out, squeeze out, and we're really proud of this number. This is a far lower percentage than I think you would find in any school division in this area, maybe even in the state. We consolidate positions. For example, our CFO is also our head of operations. Our head of curriculum is also our head of HR, you know? So we try to really focus on putting the money in the classroom, which is where we think it belongs for the kids. This is the historic transfer per pupil from the city for our school operations. We measure per pupil spending because that gives us a way to look over time at the trend in spending and also allows us to compare ourselves with other jurisdictions to make sure that we're in the range, we're not spending way too much or not quite enough. And what this chart shows you is since 2007, it's fluctuated a little bit up and then the recession hit and it was down, and with this budget of about $14,000, we're just about back to where we were in 2007 in terms of per pupil expenditures. And that is in real dollars. In constant dollars, it's equal to about $11,000. So we're doing a lot more with a lot less in the school division. And I don't know how many of you watch the budget cycles, you know, back in 2011 and 2012 where we literally looked at every position, every program, you know, discussed reducing art, drama, PE, charging for sports, half-day kindergarten, all those kinds of things. We're very rigorous about the dollars that you give us to educate our students. But here we are back in 2007. And I was asked at the League of Women Voters Forum a few weeks ago, how does that $14,000 compare with like school divisions? We compare ourselves with Arlington and Alexandria because they're more of our size than Fairfax. Arlington's still 10 times bigger than we are, but they're more of our size. And Arlington in particular, we compare ourselves to because they have an excellent school division and they're right next door. And both of those school divisions spend about 10 percent more per student than we spend here in the City of Falls Church. And you could argue that with Arlington's economies of scale, we should be spending more than they do, but we don't. So we think we get a lot for our money. The school board has found cost savings in the budget this year, and you'll see them here laid out in retirement expenses and other things. I want to give a shout out to our community partners for the schools. We have a lot of folks that work very closely with us to help us provide things for kids so that the taxpayers don't have to. One is the daycare partnership. We have a daycare program before and after school and in the summers for kids whose parents are working. That's for the most part a self-sufficient program. The city does provide some money for it, and the daycare parents are always happy with that. But the daycare group has given us this year $100,000 from their reserve to help us fund playground equipment for the kids so we don't have to do it out of taxpayer dollars, and that's a huge help to us. In addition, we have partnerships with people like the boosters, the sports boosters. They're the folks who brought you the lights on the baseball and softball fields this year, and they've done other major projects for us. But they also are contributing so that we don't have to ask for tax dollars. And finally, our education foundation, who have been great supporters of the schools and the schools' needs for technology and other things. And so if you look there, it's almost a half a million dollars that other community groups are providing to the schools so that we don't have to fund those operational needs with tax dollars. So shout out to all those great people. We also have unfunded needs. I don't think there's probably a jurisdiction or a school division anywhere that doesn't have unfunded needs, but we have a bunch of them. And you might imagine that's the case because we've been very lean, as you saw on that chart, over the last several years. And they come up to about 3.7 million. I won't step you through each of them. If you're a detailed person online on our budget site, the superintendent has posted it, so it's a three or four-page list of every single item that has been requested as an important item by our staff that we're not able to fund with this budget. So I just want you to understand, you know, this isn't a Cadillac budget, even though it's a big increase. There are lots of things that we need in the schools that we don't have and haven't asked for. Okay, so why the big increase? What's driving it? And it's pretty simple. It's students. We are pleased that more and more families are moving to Falls Church, and more and more families live in Falls Church are having kids, and they want those kids to be educated in our fine schools. We have quite a reputation in the Northern Virginia and in fact, the Washington DC area, and people seek us out and come here because they want their kids to go to our schools. And what that does is it translates into enrollment growth. And so you'll see here since 2007, kind of a steady trickling up. The big yellow box there is what we expect next year in 2014, almost 2,400 students. That's about 500 kids more over the last few years than we've had before. And just to put that in perspective, that would be like adding an entire new TJ school to our school division, right? That's a lot of kids for a school division that has a couple thousand children. And in fact, not only do our enrollment grow year to year, it grows within the year. So I thought I'd bring you up to date. This is the latest figure as of yesterday in our schools. We now have not 2,272, which we expected this year, but we have 2,300 students because during the course of the year, students come and go in our school division. Mostly come this year, as you can see from this chart, but we welcomed our 2,300th student to TJ this week. And so just this year, our school division has grown 6.7 percent, which is a lot for us. When I first joined the school board back six, seven years ago, we grew 1 and 1/2, 2 percent per year, and it was very manageable. And our projections show that this kind of growth is going to continue for the next few years. So we're growing. And the challenge, the reason you see the big increase in our funding this year is that the money hasn't kept up with the growth, right? And that's what this chart shows. The dark blue line that's going voop like this says that our kids have increased by 26 percent since 2007, so we have lots of little butts to find lots of little seats to put them in and lots of books and pencils to, you know, let them learn. But unfortunately, the city's not been able to fund us to keep up with that. And so that's what the little pink line is there, is the spending per student from overall, and then the yellow line is what the transfer from the city is. So you see a big kind of Jaws curve there. And for the couple of years of the recession, we all understood, right, that money was very tight. And then while we were rebuilding our fund balance, that was certainly a priority for the city to strengthen our financial position, but we think now it's time to turn back to the schools and to start to close that gap for our students and for our families and really for our community. And you'll notice here in the bottom, once again, 8 to 10 percent less per student here than is spent in Arlington or Alexandria. So what we're asking for isn't out of range, right? It's kind of within, in fact, less than it probably should be. But while our students have grown by 25 percent, and that's the light blue line you see there, the green is our budget, which is kind of diving down a little bit back up. The same time, the city revenues have grown nicely, but the percentage of the revenue to the schools has gone down. So there is money, I guess, is the point of that slide in the city. And if you look at the gap there over the past three years, if the schools had received 46 percent of the general fund, which is what we traditionally received, sometimes higher, sometimes lower, we would have had about $10 million more dollars sent to the schools than we have had. And I point that out because sometimes as I go around town, people kind of say, well, the schools get all the money, everything goes to the schools. And so I just want to illustrate for you kind of through data, that's not really the And then this last chart is really a comparison of the school's operating budget growth as opposed to the city's operating budget growth. For us over these, you can kind of see the paths mirror each other up and then down and then up again, but where the school's revenue has gone up by 8.1 percent for the city in its operating budget, it's been almost 18 percent. So these are all kind of things to tell you, it's really time to turn back to the priority of our schools. We now get about 40 percent of the city's operating budget. That's 6 percent we don't get at $320,000 per percent roughly, is almost $2 million not going to the schools. And $2 million buys a lot of things for schools. It buys a lot of buses, it buys a lot of gas, it buys a lot of teachers, and it buys a lot of desks and chairs and books and all the things that we need for those extra 500 kids. As a matter of fact, while we've grown by that 500 kids over the last few years, we've only hired about six classroom teachers. And I just want to pause and let you soak that in, six classroom teachers. Because we've been trying to be responsible, right, we've been putting kids, adding kids in classes, adding kids in classes, but that's not sustainable. It's just not sustainable. So what are the priorities in the budget? One is reducing class sizes, and the other is retaining our staff and hopefully hiring the best new staff for our kids. So class size comparison, our class sizes has gone from, when my kids are in school here, 2021, up to 22, 23, 24, 25. And in some cases, for example, Tony was telling me yesterday, we have a calculus class at George Mason High School now with 29 kids in it. That's not the recipe for success. Now, not every class is 29, right? But that's just an example. So what you see here, what Tony has put together for me, is elementary, middle, and high school and average class size in Arlington, Alexandria, Fairfax, and Falls Church. And you can see that our class sizes have grown larger than all of our neighbors with the exception of Fairfax, which has more kids in their high school classes than we have here. So class sizes are big, and this is just another illustration. Our school board policy when I joined the board was 22 kids per class. We've increased it to 24, but we still can't seem to find money to hire enough to keep it at that small size. As you can see, in this year, our class sizes, particularly as you go up in age, have gotten to 24, 25, sometimes 26, as I said, you know, sometimes 29, 30 at the high school. So we just have a lot of kids. And the challenges, I mean, the challenges of that, there are a few. One is kids don't get the individual attention that they need to learn, right? And that goes directly to student outcome. Two, it's harder for teachers to differentiate in the classroom for individual student abilities. And three, our classrooms are not built, they're not designed and built for that many kids. Lindy Hockenberry is going, yes, yes. We have classrooms that are built for 22 to 24 kids, and once you get 25, 26, 28, there's not enough room for not enough room for the little butts and the little seats and the teacher to do their work. So what?
Or the big ones.
Or the big ones. So I wasn't going to say that, but you can. So they're just, there's just a range of problems with this. So class size is one thing that we hope to reduce. With our budget request, class sizes would be reduced to about 24 students. So this isn't going to reduce it to 23 or 22 or 21 or 20, right? But about 24. So we'll get just barely inside of our policy and of best practice and of standards, but that's not, it's not the end. Then the second is compensating our staff. Research and our own experience in Falls Church has shown that great teachers lead to great performance for great students. And we see this, I saw this in my kids' education, we see it in the data and in the numbers every year, and our staff is underpaid. Now, the good news is for the past year and a half, we've been working closely with our staff to try to devise a compensation approach for Falls Church that works for our unique situation. Because we are aware, we have smaller schools, or at least we used to have smaller schools, and that there are benefits to teachers to being in our system. But those benefits, the margin on those starts to flatten out after a while when pay is so much lower. If you look at Arlington, and this is who we compare ourselves with because once again, they're right next door, they're excellent school system. Our teachers on every step of every ladder for compensation are paid less than in Arlington County. And some of them buy a lot, some of them buy eight, nine, 10, $12,000, particularly for masters, teachers with experience, which is what we want to have teaching here in Falls Church. So the good news about the compensation study is we're trying to find a uniquely Falls Church way that's affordable for us and great for our staff to compensate them. But as a part of this study, they all now know that they can go a mile and a half in this direction and perhaps increase their income by five, eight, 10, 12%. And that's tough. So retaining teachers is really important and as well as other staff. And so that's the other thing that's in this budget is we won't get to what they're paid in Arlington by a long shot, but it's a beginning to get our staff paid as they should be. So I wanted to just kind of touch real quickly on the formula for success in Falls Church schools. What's worked for us and where are we today against that framework? So we talk in the school board about five pillars of success. Small schools, good for students and families and good for learning, small classes, best staff you can get, helping our kids with readiness to learn, you know, kids that can read books at home, kids that have food to eat, kids that are nourished and can pay attention to school. And then having the right kind of teaching curriculum and professional development and so on for our staff. You know, these five things combined, we believe, are what has been the recipe for our success over 60 years in the Falls Church School Division. And unfortunately, today, things are looking a little bit dire in some of those boxes. Our schools are not small any longer. TJ just hit 500 and that's big. When my kids were at TJ, it was probably 250 or 300, I don't know, but it was probably that. And since we don't have land to build more schools, those schools are going to continue to get large. So this is a piece of recipe that we're going to have to just watch carefully, but I don't see that we can somehow magically make our schools get small again, which makes these others more important, right? We have to have great staff. We have to have small classes. We have to have the right curriculum and our IB curriculum and our professional developer, the right things to do. And right now, our schools aren't small, our classes aren't small, we're not taking care of our staff. So we see great challenges with the school board and that's what underpins this request. So what results do we get? There's a lot of talk in the media about public schools in this nation and not being successful and we beg to differ for our little burg here of 2.2 square miles. We get great results. And whether it's academic in the arts or athletics, our kids shine. In the arts, they win Cappy awards and our bands always win at every competition. They play the hardest pieces and they earn superiors. If you read the news press or any of the other blogs in town, you'll see that we win state championships all the time across a variety of girls and boys' sports. In fact, a couple of years ago, our sports program was named the best in the state by Sports Illustrated Magazine of any school division of any size, not just a bitty, bitty people like us. But most importantly academically, our graduation rate soars. Last year, we graduated 100% of our children, not 99, but 100%. That's unheard of. It's the highest in the state, it's probably the highest anywhere. Our SAT scores are much higher than the surrounding jurisdiction. The percentage of our kids that move on to post-secondary education is higher. I mean, I could talk to you all day. We have more national merit scholar semifinalists and finalists than any other school of our size on a percentage basis. Our academic team wins the states. I think this year was the fourth year in a row. Our robotics team is competitive. Our kids go to states and nationals. I mean, it's just incredible, the results we get. So what I want you to know is that we're not just kind of soaking up money, we're turning it into great educations for kids who then will become great parts of our community. And I think that's important, to focus on the results. So the last thing is, as I've moved around town the last four to six weeks in this budget process, I've heard a few questions over and over and I thought I might just as well address them directly as wait for you to ask them and you may have other ones as well. But first, a question, many people call the schools an engine of the city's economy. Is that true? How do the schools contribute to the city's economy? And I'm going to, I'm going to tell you a simple answer to that, but I'm also going to refer you to the Falls Church News Press this week. And there's a guest commentary this week from David Chavern. David Chavern has always been one of the people I respect in terms of a city leader. He was on the city council a number of years ago. And his guest commentary, the headline says, "Paying More For Schools Isn't A Burden, It's What We're About." And his argument kind of takes you through the cycle of great schools attracting people who will pay more for their homes, generating more property taxes for the city, which allow it to be independent, which means that we can be here on a Saturday morning in the spring, this few of us, talking about how the money in our city gets spent. So we think it's important. We've not quantified it quite yet. This summer, we're going to have an expert come to our city and quantify for us exactly what the economic benefit is to all of us in the community of having an excellent school system as opposed to a good or a very good one. But read Dave Chavern's thing here in the news press. His last paragraph, I'll just read for you. "So it's time for us to ask our elected representatives to make a choice. Are they willing to commit to do what needs to be done to make our schools truly extraordinary? Or are they going to choose community decline and the loss of our precious power of self-determination? It's just that simple." So read this, it'll step you through this virtuous circle of schools, taxes and independence for our city. The second one, "Why Do You Need More Money Per Student? Aren't There Efficiency With More Students?" In the operating budget. And the answer is yes, for a while. And if you looked at my presentation, you will have seen them, right? And so we went from 2021 kids per class to 22, to 23, to 24. So when school budgets increase, they don't increase like that. It's kind of a stepwise thing because you absorb for a while and then you get to the point where you can't absorb anymore and you have to step up. And that's what this is. So with each student, you don't have to hire a teacher. With each 15, you may not have to hire a teacher, but with each 25 or 30, yeah, you need a teacher. But with each kid, you do need a desk, you do need a pencil, you do need a book, you do need, you know, all of those things. And we've tried to take advantage of those efficiencies over the past few years. This came up this week. "Does the school board support using surplus revenue to establish a capital fund for the schools at this time?" I think one of the things that city council is talking about is taking surplus revenue from this year to set, I guess, the $900,000, almost a million of that aside for a sole capital fund because we do have buildings that need attention for sure. I've polled my colleagues on the school board about this and what I've gotten back from my colleagues is, we would love to be in the position where we could support that. The reason we can't is that our operational needs are so important at this time that we feel that that money would be better spent reducing our class sizes and paying our Maybe one day we will get to that point, but right now, we view our operational needs as trumping our capital needs because of those extra 500 children we have in our schools. And then finally, people ask me a lot, can the city afford this? And I'm going to call on my colleague Karen Sharp on the school board. He's done a lot of thinking about this and research about this. And I'm going to ask you, Karen, I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you if you would answer that question.
Well, I'll give it a shot.
I have the microphone, I need your recording. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I tripped you up there.
Be happy to go on for several days with any of you on this question, but I'll try to be very, very quick. There's a lady in our town who's going to turn 100 in June and she was part of the group that originally chartered this city. You may be familiar with a movement to basically replace what are traditional public schools with charter schools. Well, in the 1940s, when Jessie Thackeray was one of those, beginning to see that she wasn't satisfied with the schools in Fairfax County because they were mainly rural schools and they weren't that well-funded. And she and a number of her other colleagues wanted to have a school that would emphasize small class sizes, better pay for teachers, just a better school than would be available to people in Fairfax County generally. And she said, "We have to afford this," and chartered a city to do it. So we have, we have kind of a charter school because we chartered the city. And her, if you want to talk to someone who's, who would be tough on this question, talk to Jessie. And I'll just say that there are lots of ways to measure whether we can afford it. I think as a residential community, we've become much more affluent in the last 10 to 15 years than we were previously. And the statistics, census statistics bear that out. We've gone past where we used to be somewhat less affluent than Fairfax County or Loudon County or maybe even Arlington. In the last 10 years, we've passed all of them and become, as median household income, we are above all of those communities. So as a residential community, I think we have demonstrated we can afford it. Maybe if you ask the question, can we afford it? The other side of the coin is, if we can't, who can? The state at its measurement of how much money they will, they will provide to localities throughout the state has a measurement of what they call a composite index, local composite index, where they decide how much money from the state will come back to the localities to fund schools. We receive the lowest amount of subsidy from the state of any jurisdiction in Virginia. Fairfax County receives proportionately much more than we do. And there are other communities throughout the state that receive a lot more. So at least, at least those who've set up a system to measure what locality should be able to afford have said, yes, Falls Church can afford it. So again, I'll stop there. Be happy to go on for much longer if anybody cares to.
Thanks, Karen. I put him on the spot there and so I appreciate him being willing to get up. So that's the end of my comments. Are you ready to open it for questions?
I think that is the idea, if you're ready.
Yeah, sure.
You've gone through your presentation.
Yep, yep, we're done.
Well, then Chairman Carney did note the fact, as a small jurisdiction, these town hall meetings actually is where our elected representatives listen very carefully to what the commentary are and the questions are from our constituents. So we want to open that up.
I just want to say one more thing. I'm sorry Wyatt, because I told you I was done, but I'm not really. I want to comment on the CIP and school facilities needs. As Wyatt pointed out, we have an addition on TJ that'll be complete for this September. We're going to move the fifth grade in there to get them back in the school they need to be in. Please drive by and see it, it's awesome. We hope soon to be able to take people on tours, but we're not quite ready for that yet. There is money in the CIP this year to build a pre-K center over on Cherry. We are required by law to provide pre-K services to certain children and we don't have room for them in Mount Daniel any longer. And so we'll be beginning that project and that will give us a little bit of space, although not enough at Mount Daniel. And there is some money in our CIP to expand Mount Daniel and bring it up to code for ADA and other things. And so we're making good progress with our elementary level facilities and they should serve us well for quite some time. Marilyn Henderson has a few more good years in it, left before it's too overcrowded with students. But he did talk about George Mason and I think it's well-known in the community that George Mason needs a lot of work and it's going to be very expensive. And we're talking closely with city council and others about how to go about doing that. We're in the very, very early planning and discussion stages. But what I wanted to underscore was a comment that Wyatt made, which is, we are going to have to find some unique tools to make that real for our community. I don't want anyone to leave this room thinking that the school board or the city council expects that we're going to ask the community to increase taxes by 30 cents to pay for George Mason. We know that's not a possibility. We know there are other possibilities that have to be innovative and creative and we're going to look at all of them to try to figure this out. But when he said 30 cents, there was this kind of gasp in the room and I just wanted people to understand that that's not the plan, that's not the ask, that's not where we expect to be. So please don't leave here thinking that. And to my knowledge, that money for George Mason is not, is not yet in the CIP. It's a request from the school board because we want everyone in the community to know we need it, but it's not in the CIP until we can figure out ways to fund and finance it through some innovative new revenue stream. So that was just the last thing.
Very good. Thank you. Before we take questions and comments, I do want to just note that Mayor Baruch very much wanted to be here this morning, but he is, and his wife have just welcomed into the world their daughter, Mia Grace. And they are moving from the hospital to their home today. And so if Mayor Baruch had actually been here, that he would have actually been in big trouble, I think. So all the best to them as they, as they welcome Mia into the world. So now, it's open mic and we have questions here. I would ask that if, we'll go around, we'll just go, as people raise their hands and we'll get a mic to you. We do ask that you speak into the mic and the mic is really not for folks here in this room, but we do tape it and so you can, you can see it later and people in the community can see it. And I would ask if you just say your name first before you ask a question or make a comment. Thank you.
My name is Carol Kennedy. I've lived in Falls Church City for almost three years and I've heard nothing but wonderful things about the school system. I came here from McLean. So I agree with the need to spend money on the schools. What I'm worried about is the sequester. Has there been any studies done on the effect of sequestration on, particularly I know the Washington DC area is going to be strongly affected by it? This is a 10-year law that is in effect and there's no sign of it being repealed at this moment. We can't come into agreement for that. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if we're, if people start losing their jobs, government contractors start losing their jobs, all the people that are associated with the government, how are individuals going to be able to afford to live here?
I think that's a very important question. I've got a thing. We have looked at it from the perspective of both direct impacts and then economic impacts. Direct impacts are actually pretty minor. One example of a direct impact, however, is we've taken advantage of Build America Bonds or the QSCAB Bonds, which are subsidized bonds for the TJ Elementary School and also for some water improvements. Sequestration could impact that program, which would increase our debt service on those bonds already issued. Effectively, the federal government is defaulting on its agreement for helping us subsidize those interest rates. But that is, that is, you know, there are a few very direct impacts on us because we don't have a lot of exposure directly from federal money that comes into our budgets. The economy is a completely different question and there's a lot of tea leaf reading on that and there's a big range in it. We rely on experts with George Mason to try to help us with those projections and we talk amongst all the local governments, what are you seeing, what are you projecting? All in all, it does cause us to have sober forecasts of revenue in the future. And so we have traditionally in this city had 5% average year-over-year growth in the economy that has supported everything that you see built around here. We do not forecast that for the future. And so when you talk about, okay, well, maybe you forecast 3% growth in the economy. I don't know whether that's right or not, but that's, you know, that's one way, one way to look at it. Well, 2% less than the 5% growth that we're used to is a 30% decrease in terms of the annual growth and that's major. You really have to restructure yourself. And I think the schools and the general government have worked very hard to try to resize their operations in light of that reality and the reduction of administrative costs on the school side, the reduction of our workforce by 11% on the general government side. Where it goes from here, we just have to continue to watch it. Where it goes from here, we just have to continue to watch it very carefully, and we don't have a lot of forecasts for increased revenue. Yes?
Gary?
This... Mr. Hicks, this is on stormwater, so maybe you might address it. Originally, there was 9.2 people, employees, with the stormwater thing. Are those salaries going to be paid off out of the general fund, or are they being paid out of the separate fund, including salaries, retirement, health costs? And second question is, stormwater credits for those people who have put in stormwater management systems?
Super. In regards to the first question, currently, in the general fund, about 1 cent of your tax rate goes to stormwater, and that includes salaries for that 1.2 people, including part of my salary, part of an engineer's salary, part of our public work superintendent, a contract manager. All of those salaries, the 1.2, comes out of the general fund and goes completely into the enterprise fund. The new positions would be entirely in the enterprise fund, and then all of the fringe benefits, those retirement costs, all of that winds up in the enterprise fund. And the second thing, I sat down and it was whispered in my ear that I didn't mention the incentive program, and I apologize. Part of the state statute that allows for an enterprise fund to exist under a stormwater utility fee is that there has to be a program in place that allows for discounts of that rate. So if you're billed on the amount of impervious cover on your lot, one way you can make that bill go down is to have less impervious cover, so you could take up portions of your driveway, your roof sidewalk, whatever that is. The other way you could make your bill go down is that if you have a, what we call a best management practice, these are the things that clean up stormwater to meet the goals of the program, then all of the drainage area that's impervious, that drains to that BMP, we would give you a 30% credit on it. So if you've got 1,000 square feet that drains to a BMP, and that BMP meets certain standards, it's recorded in our inventory, we're inspecting it, you're maintaining it, then if 1,000 square feet drain to that area, then we'll only be looking at 700 square feet because we're going to give you a 30% discount of that area. So the rate remains the same, the amount of impervious kind of comes down. The second way this credit program will work is to offer a 10% discount if you have in place an approved stormwater pollution prevention plan. Now, for big industrial sites, it's going to be a plan. If you have that filed with the state, there's an approval for that, and if you have that in place, you've got to do that, we're automatically going to give you a discount. But we're going to make this accessible to homeowners and businesses who do not have that. We're going to put together a toolbox. It'll have maybe 10 items. You'll have to do six or seven of those, and that will be, you'll figure out which ones you're going to do. You'll apply to us, we'll approve that, you'll do those things, and then we're going to give you a 10% rate off of your entire fee. So if your fee is that $250, then you would pay $225 per year.
All right, let's go in the back here in the back corner, and then we'll go to you, sir.
I think this...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My name is Ulrika Patzel. We're owning property here since about 10 years, and I have actually still a comment to make to your comment. The sequester, I think, is not something that will only impact us in the future, but has already impacted us today. And I was wondering how you're going to take that into consideration when you will raise the taxes substantially this year? I mean, we have a lot of government employees here, living here in the city, whose salary has been frozen since 2010. So we have never had an adjustment in our salary. The costs of living here have gone up substantially in those three years already and are bound to go up even more this year with the taxes. Further, government employees are also facing furloughs. So we have sequester, we have furloughs, we have pay freeze. We don't even know if our pay will ever go up again because it has been pushed out and pushed out and pushed out. So how do you take that into consideration with raising the taxes this year? How will that impact you? Will you take this even into consideration? Or will be families like us be forced to leave because we cannot afford living here anymore? How will you address that in your tax rate increase?
I think that's the core of the issue, that the council has to balance these priorities between dealing with enrollment growth and dealing with the affordability of government services. And I think that's what the budget process is all about. In terms of the budget guidance, for me, the council's guidance was on the general government side to keep any growth of expenditures within what natural growth of revenue increase just because of economic growth would provide. And so that was the guidance on the general government side, and the budget does reflect that. But we're dealing with school enrollment pressures, and so the council needs to evaluate that request from the school board as well.
Do you have the next two questions back here?
Okay.
Just in the school board's perspective, one of the questions we saw here was about, do we support using surplus revenue to establish a capital fund? And we have, our fund balance is at the maximum for a policy, and that's great for our city. That's an important thing, and I am pleased the city council has done that. They did it much more quickly than they could have, right? Which has been kind of starving the operating budgets on the city side and on the school side. And the argument the school board would make, and it's not our decision, obviously, is that we are going to have probably $2.6 million of surplus revenue this year. Now, in normal times, you would use that only for capital expenses, and that would be prudent to do. But my question, the school board's question, is, are we in normal times this year? And could not those funds be used for operating expenses for city and schools because we have reserves at the 17% target rate? We have a new capital reserve, and I'm just not sure it's the right timing for a new school reserve and a new water reserve and some other things. So that's just a conversation that we've had.
Next question.
I'm Amy Ballard Wood, and I have been in the city for 14 years now, and I have a third grader at TJ. A lot of other parents couldn't be here today because of sports and music and many other activities, but I talk to a lot of them a lot of the time, as some other parents who are actually here know. So I think that it's safe to say that I'm expressing some concerns of a lot of people. City council seems to be indicating, or at least some on city council seem to be indicating that they will not fully fund the school's budget request. And I know that there are some members of council here, maybe they can speak to this. But I'd like to know, how much are they proposing to cut out of this? I mean, this is a bare bones kind of a budget. What are they really, you know, what's the maximum amount that they're proposing to cut out of this budget? And a question for Dr. Jones, what effect is that going to have? I mean, this is not, you know, this is looking at critical and mandated needs in the schools and not small class sizes. I don't consider 24 to be a small class size for my kid, and I'm sure that a lot of other people don't either. It's not a luxury kind of a thing. So I know that people don't want their taxes raised. I don't want taxes raised, but is this the way to do it? And I'd just like to hear some comments about that, please.
All right, and a question here. Here, right on the other side, Amy has a microphone for you.
Hi. I'm sorry.
There was a question. How much are they proposing to cut?
Well, I think that's, the city council is going to have a work session on Tuesday night, and I think the council is working hard to work through what the best options are for the budget. But I don't think the, I don't know that today is the time to have a response directly to that question. I mean, ultimately, that is what, you know, as you sort out the budget priorities, that's what the decision's going. The council will need to arrive at decisions on this, and I don't think they have their minds made up.
Well, even if they don't, do you think that Dr. Jones could present some scenarios for, you know, what certain amounts would be?
I'll make a comment down, I'll turn it over to Tony. I know that there are some options that have been distributed to city council members for ways to make this up. I'm not going to comment on them because that's not my job, luckily, this year. But there is at least one option that I think would cut the school board's requests by 1.2 or 1.3 million. And so I've asked Dr. Jones to be prepared to talk about what that would mean to our budget request. Do you want to? Do you want me to? What are you going to?
Devastating, it's one word.
I mean, it really is. It's one word, it's devastating. You know, when we look at the budget, I think it's really important to note, too, because on the slide, when it talks about transfer to schools, the request, what we really ask for is a $3.2 million increase, and out of that, 1.4 million is for student enrollment growth. The rest of it is mandated and fixed costs like VRS and healthcare. We have student security for $200,000. I don't think anybody is going to advocate to cut out student security. We have $70,000 in reconfiguration. We have to have money to shuffle and get our kids relocated this summer. That's it. So there's not a lot of option.
Devastating.
Devastating. So just for example, 1.3 million is what we have in our budget to hire all the new teachers we need to reduce class size, plus to add compensation for our staff. So that's a kind of a big thing. That is the size of the entire list of things that are mandated that we must spend money on. Special ed staff and other things that, based on state standards, we have to spend money on, plus moving things for schools. And as Tony says, that's all the dollars attributed to those 500 kids. So I know in a budget our size, it might seem like that's not much money, but because we're on the margin already and we have so many new kids, you know, every little bit is really very, very important. And we don't, you know, 85% of our budget is our staff. That's the same as is for a school division. So we have staff, we have buses, we have instructional materials, you know? That would be a little bit more than our entire instructional materials budget. So I just wanted to kind of put a human face on it for you. I mean, these are not insignificant things that we would have to decide. And we don't know today what we would decide. We would have to go back to our community and say, you know, "What are your priorities?" You know, class sizes, compensation, should kids not have books? I mean, you know, we don't know. We'd have to figure that out. But it's not trivial.
All right. I think we had a question here. Yes.
I actually don't have a question. I just wanted to make sure I made my comment about how, as a taxpayer, I think our tax money should be spent, and again, representing a lot of what I'm hearing in the community. I mean, if you step back, a lot of great information was presented today, but if you really boil it down, you just have to step back and say, "What are our priorities as a community?" And I think that we can all agree, our real estate values are higher. Most of us moved here because of our schools. We've got to fund our schools. You know, small class sizes is everything to our students. And to hear the numbers, I know I personally have benefited for my sons and getting special attention, and that can't happen with these large classrooms. So then you step back and you look at, where is the money going? How is it being spent? Where is it coming from? And our taxes are going up. So I'm trying to figure out, and that's why I came today, to try to figure out where our money is getting spent. And I think I see it on some big issues that we can't deny need to happen, like the stormwater management. But does it have to happen out of our next 10 years? Why are we not bonding this? This is going to benefit people 100 years down the road. You know, why is everything getting, why is the CIP, why is the fund balance going up in two years' time, but yet our schools aren't coming back? Why is that the priority, that we get our fund before we get our schools funded? I mean, what are we doing from a big picture? And I think that, you know, most of us would agree that our schools are more important than getting our fund balance back up. We're being extremely conservative. The federal government's not acting like that, our local communities are not acting like that. I personally am not having my money sit in the bank, I'm paying off my debt. You know, how are we doing it as a community? And let's step back and look at the big picture. We've got to fund our schools, and let's figure out a way that we can have a reasonable tax increase and still get everything else done. And if it means we need to take out extra debt, that's what we need to do.
I do want to just note, in this stormwater area, the largest part of the program is debt-funded capital improvements. So that is kind of the core of the program, is to make, is to use debt to make capital improvements, both for stormwater quality and to address our places where we know people are being flooded out, you know, every year or every other year. And so that's the largest part of the program, but there is also, it's a system, and the system is not currently being maintained with staff, and that's a big part of the flooding problem as well, is we need some capacity there just to take care of it. Yes?
I'm Bob Pender. I live down the street. I've lived here for 28 years. The reason I'm here today is actually, I want to ask you a couple of questions about the budget. I really appreciate your presentation. It was very objective and comprehensive. We seem to be clearly going down a path where you kind of question the sustainability of Falls Church. I was particularly taken by the chart showing the increased student enrollment in the schools. We're doing something to attract a lot of families that have kids that want to go to our schools. And so that curve is going up. At the same time, our tax rates are going up, and we talk about we can afford it, but I think the people who aren't here, a lot of the people who vote with their feet, a lot of retired people, a lot of people on fixed incomes, who end up leaving Falls Church quietly, they don't show up at meetings like this, and they're not going to be vociferous, they're not going to be shouting. They just vote with their feet quietly. And what happens is, we seem to be in a little bit of a death spiral where people move out, new families move in with families, we get more and more kids, we get more and more kids, and so the school become, the city of Falls Church becomes basically a one-note song about the schools. And it's not, it's not, my concern is frankly diversity and balance of a community. A real community has elderly people, it has poor people, it has a diverse, you know, spirit. And I think we're becoming a little bit of a city of parents with kids in a school district, and then when their kids graduate, they leave. I worry about that because that's not the city that I came here for. My kids went to Falls Church, public school kids, they did great, we love it. I'm proud of Falls Church school system. But what my question goes to is this, not this year's budget, but a very interesting discussion you had about the capital fund, the reserve fund, and the capital improvements fund over the next 10 years. So I have two questions. One, in your presentation on the reserve fund, everything I've read in the news press, everything that I saw, you know, in the materials, is really based on credit rating agencies downgrading us because that's going to cost us. What I found surprising, to be candid, in your presentation was that one of the reasons we need to, in fact, it was a big part of your presentation, was that one of the reasons we need an increase in the reserve fund is to fund unexpected capital improvements during the construction of the high schools as it's coming up. You went back and you talked about Henderson, and you talked about the need to make unexpected capital improvements, and we had to fund that $5 million out of the reserve fund. You seem to be saying, one of the big rationales for an increase in the capital reserve fund is, in fact, a black box, a wish bag of funding which actually goes on top of the school budget. That concerns me as a rationale, in particular, if, in fact, we can get away with less today and have a more prudent and very careful examination of, you know, how we're going to build these schools in the future and what's going to be in those schools. The second thing is, if your increase in the tax rate goes up 30 cents today, based on interest rates today, if three years from now, interest rates go up 2%, that's 60 cents on the tax rate. We are in historically low interest rate environment, and when you amortize the debt at 2% or 3%, whatever we're going to borrow, long-term fixed, to pay for a $90 or $100 million project, if that interest rate goes up to 4% or 5%, we are talking about a catastrophic impact on Falls Church. And so I want to ask you about the interest rate assumptions and whether or not, in fact, the reserve fund can be lower and still maintain our AAA, our AA rating. Thank you.
The, Mr. LaCondre is in the back of the room. What's our interest rate assumption for our debt forecast? Ms. LaCondre is our chief financial officer.
Over the five-year CIP, the interest rates are projected to range anywhere from 3% to 4.5%. All right? What we did is we increased the interest rate each year by about a quarter of a point. All right? We will monitor that and... And we will monitor that and make changes as we need to.
In terms of the black box comment, prudent capital project management dictates that you have your project plan, and then you manage it, and you accomplish your objectives. And I believe we did that with Mary Ellen Henderson. We had a $30 million project, we delivered it on time and on budget, and it was a very well-managed project. But there became discretionary items that said, gosh, it would be smart, we don't have to do it, but it would be smart if we did this now. And we had the financial capacity to say, okay, we're going to take advantage of this opportunity to do it at a lower cost now, rather than do it later. In the TJ expansion project, it's basically a $10 million project, we decided, you know, there's HVAC repairs that we could have done with the TJ project, but we couldn't afford. It would have been probably smarter to do those HVAC repairs and increase the project cost. We didn't have the cash to do it, the answer had to be no. We'll go back, we'll do it later, it will be more expensive to do it later. We didn't have the financial capacity to get it done. So, those are the trade-offs that you have to make on a capital project.
I would normally, as a financial planning device, I would normally think of those items as a contingency that's included in any capital budget. So, when you had your $90 million plan for the schools, in fact, there would be 10% contingency.
There's a big contingency factored into that, and that's a very preliminary number as well. But there's basic, I think this really does get to just the basics of financial management. And I don't think there's a financial manager that would provide advice to a local government anywhere that would advise you to have lower fund balances going into a capital plan of anywhere near the scale that we have right now. You just won't find that consultant that would be able to give you that advice. And so, in some respects, I think we need to, if we're serious about the capital plan, I would advocate to the city council, the council's going to make the final decision, that we should follow best practices for our financial planning. And that's what the budget does represent. Yes, sir? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, Rob Carr over on Parker Street. So, first of all, the stormwater piece, this 30% credit based on the square feet of retention water for your best management practice, is slap in the face. I went through the oppressive process of building a house, going through the processes the city has, it was very oppressive with an evil woman named Patricia. You frown like, I bet you remember her. Anyway, the point is, if I'm collecting water from a thousand square foot of roof, I should not be taxed for that thousand square foot. It cost me thousands of dollars to put that system in. To say that it would only be a 30% credit, it just bespeaks to the fact that this is nothing more than a bloat of government. Now, more globally, I would ask, is it really smart to establish a separate fund outside of the global tax rate that we have now, specific to this? Why not have another one for the schools, or another one for the police, or another one for rec and parks? You're taking the power of making financial decisions away from city council.
I'll try to jump in on it. I think that's an important part of the discussion that the council is having in terms of establishing the fund.
And a small tax deductible.
Right. We do, we have experience with enterprise funds. We provide water service, sewer service through an enterprise fund mechanism. One thing that the enterprise fund does allow us to do is have a long-range capital plan, which is not typical for police or for other services, and stormwater is capital-intensive, and be able to do that planning with, on a utility basis, that allows us to do it more efficiently and at a lower cost. And the other aspect of it is, is you talk about the credit, if it is in the ad valorem tax, then there's no opportunity for a credit, zero. You can't get a credit, there's not a real clear mechanism to do so. And so, the utility fee at least gives us a mechanism to do it. Now, the 30% credit, that's going to be a policy discussion that we'll have with the council. 30% is the industry standard, and it reflects the fact that what happens on your property is good, but there's still a lot of infrastructure out there that your improvement is not going to necessarily help. And so, that's the rationale behind it, but, you know, we'll continue to have that discussion, and we'll do it with public input. And comments like this are important ultimately for the final decision on it.
Thank you, my name is Eric Pelton. I've got two kids in the school system, and my family owns three businesses in the city of Falls Church. So, I love Falls Church, and I'm clearly all-in on the city of Falls Church. All of these expenses, which many people agree are either necessary or prudent in, you know, in large part or in whole, the only way I foresee, the only logical way to pay for all of this is more development, is to increase our tax base. And I can't believe that we've sat here for an hour and a half, and there's been little or zero discussion of more development. So, I think our, we need to add to our list of priorities, how can we increase and expedite bringing smart development to the city of Falls Church in the appropriate areas? That's my overall comment. My question regarding the water enterprise fund would be, how is the rate going to be set in the future? Is there a cap on the rate? Is it reset every year? Is it set by the city councils, is it set by the city staff? Is there a process for that?
On the rates, it would be set by the city council, and it could be set on an annual basis. We would try to have a five-year plan, we'd want to have some rate stability, so the rate's not going up and down wildly each year. We'd manage it much like we do our water and our sewer utilities. So, it's an annual process, but you try to do that annual decision in the context of a longer-term plan. In terms of economic development, it is, I think, a key priority, and I think probably council members would say it's the top priority in terms of what the council's focus is on. In terms of our track record, we've had a significant amount of important economic development in the city, whether it's the BJ's up on the hill, or other all-commercial development in the city. The hotel is coming online next year, that will help us. The mixed-use developments in the city, whether it's the Byron, the Spectrum, the Reed Building, Pearson Square, in total, those projects, we report this out each year, just so we're tracking our performance on those. And those generate $5.2 million of gross revenue to the city each year. They also have costs with them. They have general government costs with them, and they have school costs with them. And we calculate those costs in terms of the pupils generated from the mixed-use projects. It's $17,000 per student, that's what we model as the cost that's generated with those projects. And so, if you net out those costs, the mixed-use projects in the city are about $2.2 million to the positive since they were built in the city. In other words, without those projects, our tax rate would be about 7 cents higher today than it would be without them. So, that's part of the rationale while we are working hard to bring the Harris Teeter project, the Reserve at Tenner Hill, those are both before our boards and commissions right now, and the council will evaluate those special exceptions in May. But those also, you know, we do the fiscal impact calculations for those as well, and we do believe them to be strongly positive. And so, it's all part, I think, of an effort to keep the city on a sustainable track. But each one of them has a lot of issues in terms of, do they reflect good design and their community values? Are they sustainable from a cost perspective, and from a government services perspective, including importantly, schools? And can the market build them? And those three things have to come together for the project to be successful, and that's why we have our board and commission review, and we really take pains on each of these projects.
I'm Robert Lijanes, and I, like many of you, agree that we can afford to fund our schools and to make critical infrastructure investments. The question is, how do we go about that? How do we find the revenues for that? And that's why I undertake particular umbrage when suggested to us that we can't dip into the lockbox of 12 to 15 million, or whatever it is, or we can't raise our level of debt above 5% of assessed value to the state limit of, or even to approach the state limit of 10%. A couple of different interpretations I'd like to point out is that this Moody's document from 2010, for example, references undesignated funds rather than unspent funds, and then actually, on page six of the handout, they're described as unassigned fund balances. So, that's not a representation necessarily of the conservativeness of those budgets, but the flexibility of those budgets. That money can still be spent at the end of the year. I've read both of the reports from the government, or guidance from the Government Finance Officers' Association, in combination with the generally accepted accounting principles on those policies, and they also suggest that some of those funds are spent at the end of the year. But let's just say for a minute that my interpretation is wrong, and the interpretation of our neighboring budget officials is wrong, because they don't follow this advice, the 17% either. What is the potential downside, this punitive penalty that we're going to pay? Recently, earlier this month, the state of Illinois, who's ranked as the worst state in terms of credit ratings, went to auction with over 800 million in bonds. 450 million of those bonds were 10-year bonds. Okay, so, does anybody want to guess what the interest rate on those bonds was? Or did you read about it? It's 3.3%. Okay? That is 1% higher than what some of the best states were paying. But 3.3% is actually, when you factor in inflation of 3% or 4%, almost free money. Okay? So, this is the time, with all of these infrastructure needs, with interest rates at historic lows, for us to be spending, either taking on more debt, or reducing our fund balance, not eliminating it, but bringing it in line with our neighbors who also have the same credit rating that we do. Okay? And even if we do reduce that too far, and our credit ratings fall, at the end of the day, the city can still finance its spending for a lot cheaper than any of our households can. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Ron Russo, and I've lived in the city about 35 years. I just want to make a statement. The proposed budget does have significance on the diversity of the city. Basically, an unmet need that's in the budget is the Affordable Housing Fund, which is not being attended to at all, basically, because we don't want to raise a tax rate one more cent or something like that. We've eliminated all rent subsidy for low-income families. And the tax relief program is limited to $2,000, so any increase in taxes hits the elderly, who are mostly affected by that, about 100 households in the city. I just want to say that it does have a cost, and I think what we're losing by it is the diversity of our city over a period of time. I fully agree that we have to fund the schools, I fully agree that we need good schools. But it's being done because our community is changing into what I usually get more and more as a gated community, an affluent community, which is good, and basically, but it's changing. And what we're sacrificing by the changing community and not addressing the affordability issues and the diversity issues is we're losing the nature of our community over time. I think that's a big loss for the city. So, I would say that if it needs a cent more, if it needs a half-cent more, if it needs a cent and a half more, we consider trying to keep the diversity and putting programs in it that helps the elderly and the lower income, which represent about 20% of our community. And we seem to be forgetting about those, be it through the fund balance, be it through an additional cent, let's put our priorities with the diversity that we want. There's about 10%, at least when I was working, there was about 10% of our school community that is low-income and basically in need of assistance, because the rents are going up too, and not all of them, but a lot of these people live in rental housing. My understanding, though, is, if I'm reading it wrong, is that the $1.33 does not include the one cent of the $270 per average household that it would cost us on the fund. So, it's really 1.34 is the tax we're looking at, if you consider the stormwater as another cent. So, we'd be going to 1.34 about.
Well, in terms of the, with the stormwater, you know, that is an additional expense, and there's no question about that. The, I think the case for the stormwater, you know, ultimately, you know, this is something we need to work out in terms of what our level of service is going to be, and how we're going to meet these federal mandates. We do believe, however, that if we're going to address the issue, that we need to provide a higher level of service than we're providing right now. And so, a big question also is then, how do you fund it? Do you fund it through the tax rate, you know, based on the ad valorem, or do you fund it through the fee? And one aspect of it is, is that typically, you know, as a general rule, the single-family homeowner is going to pay far more on an ad valorem basis than they would on the fee. Generally, it's going to be the shopping centers and some of our commercial folks who have lots of paved areas that are typically going to pay higher under the fee basis as opposed to the ad valorem. We need to be pretty straightforward about that in our discussions with the chamber and with the community on that, that there are these trade-offs in terms of whether you go with the utility fee or the ad valorem. But I think that's one aspect of the decision that has not been made, and that the council is listening to the community on right now before it makes a decision. Yes?
I'm Betty Wright, and I have lived in the city 50 years. I'm retired and a widow. I have a small house, and I pay $7,400 on a one-story house. And so, I want to say that I would like to stay here longer, because I keep seven more children out of the schools by me maintaining my home. And so, I just want to speak to that, that, you know, the raising of the tax rate means a lot to a lot of people here.
Let's go here, and then we'll go here. Oh, okay, you've had your hand up, you're next.
Wow, this is intimidating. I'm a special ed paraprofessional at Thomas Jefferson Elementary, so I can relate, hello, to the moms and dads and parents and workers at Thomas Jefferson or in the school system. This is my first time here, and I've heard a bunch of number crunching and acronyms and words I can't even pronounce. But I just wanted to say that I think that the overall and obvious focus should be on the school systems, and, you know, it's the heart of the community. Of course, you know, focusing on the stormwater, it's important. You said about $80 billion, $80 million is going to be planned to work on the stormwater systems?
Over 50 years. I mean, that's the investment that we have in it now.
Okay, so, $80 million over 50 years, that's a huge number. Where is the money going for the school systems? Where, I think that the overall focus should be on not only the school systems, but the workers in the schools. The amount of students in classrooms are increasing, so what's going to happen when we don't have the tools, we don't have the money to support all of those things? You know, of course, community as a whole is important. We do need this community to, you know, be strong in order to support all the school systems. But another issue at hand that I think that should be seen as equivalent to stormwater are the school systems. We need all the support we can get, and as Ms. Carney mentioned, we need the best of the best that we can get for these school systems. And I've been in situations where I've seen staff members that should just, should not even be working in the school systems, that are full-time. And my specific issue here that I'm here today is to bring to your attention that there are special ed paraprofessionals. I'm a paraprofessional at Thomas Jefferson Elementary. There are a couple of other special ed paraprofessionals that are part-time that would like to be full-time, and that bend over backwards to do what they need to do for these students who need to get what they need, as well as other students in the school. Me being a para, it's a really, it's ridiculously hard task to do. You're constantly dressing up and just putting on your game face every day. You don't know what to expect. Sometimes I come home looking like an art project, because I had art that day. Some other days, I come home with, you know, weird substances on my clothes. You know, if you're a parent, or if you're a teacher, if you have children, you know that it's either one, two, three, as referring to number one being PP, two, three. I've dealt with all of those things, and I feel like we're not being recognized. There are workers at Thomas Jefferson There are workers at Thomas Jefferson Elementary who bend over backwards to do what they can do to provide for your children, and they're not being recognized, they're not being compensated for it. So, what are you doing to acknowledge and recognize us as the educators, and as the ones who put your children first, and we put ourselves second? What are you doing to make sure that we're getting the tools that we need, and that we're getting the recognition that we need in order to provide our 100 percent effort and work into your children in order, so that they can get the education that they need to succeed in this society? And more specifically speaking, the special ed, autism, learning disorder, ADHD, what are we, what are you doing to help the special ed paraprofessionals and to acknowledge us in order for us to have the time that we need? I want, I'm requesting to be full-time, and there are, I'm representing the special ed paraprofessionals at Thomas Jefferson who are part-time. So, we're requesting to be full-time because we see it as a prior need to get the time that we need to develop all these lesson plans. Teachers have lesson plans, they have separate lesson plan timed, they have about an hour a day to plan out their lessons for their students. Paraprofessionals are only left with their lunchtime, which is about 30 minutes, to plan. And even that, I'm taking work home to plan for these special ed students, just to make sure that they're able to function according to the social norm in this society. So, what are you going to do about that?
Thank you.
Thank you. I think you have time for two more questions.
Okay.
Did Amy have one over there?
Yeah.
My name is Sharon Scholler, and most of you know me. I've been following the schools for a long time. I was PTA president, and most notably in terms of the budget. I've been a budget watcher for the schools for a very long time, including this year. I no longer have children in the schools. Two of my children went through the schools and received a wonderful education. I've taken a look at the school board budget, and I've studied it. It's a perfectly reasonable budget. In fact, they've cut out many things that I would feel are totally necessary. Both the city side and the school side over the past number of years have cut operations in order to meet guidance from the city council. I feel that it's time now to put our money into operations on both sides, to hold off on putting more money into the fund balance, which we've funded with excess revenues over the past few years, not to start the capital fund reserve this year, and to really fund the school system and the city to the extent that they need to be funded after years of pairing, you know, staff and materials, and doing everything they can to manage efficiencies. And I'll just share something with you. I've been a budget watcher for a very long time, and when my daughters were in elementary school, I was sitting in a budget work session for the school board, and I remember Greg Alexiu, who was the principal of TJ at that time, said, "I'm not asking for very much this year." He said, "But I'm going to tell you, I'm holding the line right now, but all of my classes are at near capacity. So, when I come in next year, I'm going to have what Susan called a big ask." And that's exactly what the school system has done. It has held down its costs and let the student, class sizes increase to the point where it's just not manageable right now. And I'd also like to say something. A lot of people think about elementary school and the class size in elementary school, and think about, oh, high school, what difference does it make if you have 28 or 30 IB kids in a class? They're all really smart, and they should be able to handle a man, you know, handle a class like, the teacher should be able to handle a class like that without differentiation. The problem with that is that our teachers teach five classes like that, and the IB classes require an extensive amount of work, that the teacher drafts and drafts of major papers, that the teachers are interacting with the students with, and it's very easy as an IB teacher to burn out under a situation like that, and that really goes to retaining our teachers. So, we really need to lower the class sizes, you know, throughout our system. Also, I want to make sure that our city staff, who are absolutely wonderful and whom we all love, and our school staff, about whom we feel the same way, are adequately compensated. So, I say, put the money into operations and postpone the other things until some of these other projects come online, and we have some more revenue at that time.
Okay. All right.
My name is Mary Chavis, and I've been in the city for 33 years. I'm a very strong supporter of the school system. I've had three children go through the school system, and I've come down very strongly in support of the school board's request. I think it is time to get back to additional funding for reducing class size, and to the extent that we can, to improving salaries, even though those within the government are still being held constant in their rates of salary. But my bigger question is whether we really are ready on the stormwater management system to make a decision at this point. It appears as though, in order to go forward, we're taking the 2.6 million surplus funds, deferring a fee decision, but still making the decision, yes, we're ready to go with this as a fee-based approach. And I'm wondering if we have done adequate analysis in terms of going the bond approach to the extent we can use this as a debt vehicle, rather than primarily a fee or tax component at this point? And that would be my question. Have you done the analysis? How much of the $1.8 million cost per year is really debt finance, and how much is compensation out of current dollars?
Okay. And so, if Mr. Hicks can answer that question, and then we'll break, and we'll remain here to answer further questions that folks have, and I'll ask Mr. Snyder to make some comments before we break. Mr. Hicks?
So, the stormwater program consists of three pieces. One is the operations side, and that is staff, it is contractors for point repairs, it is materials. If you're going to put pipe in the ground, you have to pay for that pipe, you have to have gravel, those sorts of things. So, that's a component. The other two components are both capital. One is about $1 million a year for water quality improvements over that 15-year time horizon. The second is $1 million a year for reinvestment and rehabilitation of that $80 million investment in the ground. So, this fund will raise $1.7 million every year. We will debt fund the entirety of the capital program, so you're actually leveraging that money, so you get $2 million of investment into the capital fund, 100 percent of that is debt financed. The operational side, you cannot, you cannot pay for that through bonds. I mean, that has to be ongoing monies. So, what remains is, I think there's about $600,000 of salaries, and then materials and contractor work associated with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Vice Mayor David Snyder?
First of all, I want to thank all the presenters here this morning, whether you agree or disagree with the messages, the messengers, I think are world-class, so maybe a round of applause for them. I want to recognize a couple folks who came in shortly after the beginning, Councilmember Ira Kalin, who's there in the back, and Councilmember Johanna Berry, Councilmember Phil Duncan stayed on the vice mayor. Let me conclude with a couple baseline remarks. The first thing is that if you look around what government does, the functions that they perform, almost everything that people rely on, on a daily basis, is local government. So, your active participation, not only here, but going forward regardless of the decisions that we make over the next couple weeks, is absolutely critical to the continued functioning of this, of this community. Second point I'd make is we've all listened very carefully to what everybody has said, and we've looked at all the emails, read all the letters, and we'll keep doing that as we make our decision. We are, like you, taxpayers, business people, involved in this community as you are. So, we're not separate and apart, and we will make our honest best effort to resolve all of these difficult issues. As I go about my other job, I often say that, well, they say, "What's it like to be a local official?" And I say, "I have the most wonderful constituency in the world," and that just underscores, I think, what all of us believe. So, we're all in this together, we're all going to do our very, very best, and we need your engagement going forward. Finally, I would say, you know, when you think about what's really important to you in your everyday life, I had two kids that went through the schools, they were better prepared and more competitive academically than any of their peers when they went to school, and the schools prepared them well for their lives in the future. Our police have an average response time of something under three minutes. None of this comes cheap. Our employees put in much more than they're actually compensated for, whether they're in the schools in the city. We also fully recognize, because we're all part of it, the economic condition that people in, the need to maintain diversity in a lot of other ways, in a lot, in a lot of ways, and we're going to keep looking at that. And finally, the importance of business and economic development, we all realize that, and as was mentioned, some projects are going forward. So, please stay with us, please stay involved, help us make the best decisions, and regardless of the outcome of this particular budget, this is part of a long stream. This community has been here for, in one form or another, for 300 years, and we want it to be here for 300 years more, and you can help make that happen. So, thank you all very much for your time this morning.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. And that will conclude our town hall meeting. Thank you, have a great Saturday, and we'll remain to answer further questions.